Or cabinet ministers to the stage. We can welcome D'Amino. So remain standing for the singing of the national anthem.
Hail Grenada, land of oars, we pledge ourselves to thee. Heads, hearts, and hands in unity to reach your destiny. Ever conscious of God, being proud of our heritage. May we with faith and courage aspire, build, advance. As one people, one family, God bless our nation.
Please remain standing, we invite Reverend Stevenson Wurm to open us in prayer.
Let us all pray. O eternal and ever wise Father, the Creator of heaven and earth, the seas, things visible, invisible, the Creator of humankind, the God of this universe, we ascribe greatness to your name and we give you glory and praise and honour, for there is none like you in this earth. And tonight, we're indeed grateful, we're grateful that we're alive, we're grateful that you've given us strength, we're grateful that you've given us breath. And as your word declares, let everything that has breath praise to the Lord. Your word says, "All that men will praise the Lord for his goodness and for his wonderful works to the children of men." And tonight, we want to thank you and praise you and worship you. You are the centre stage of attraction in this world. And so Father, tonight, as we acknowledge you in all our ways, you have also promised that you would direct our path. And based upon that assurance, we acknowledge you today as masters, Lord, as king, as the great I Am, as the Alpha, the Omega. We acknowledge you for guidance, for wisdom, for counsel. And everything that we need to sustain us in this life, we lean on you for that and we depend upon you for that. I take this special moment, Father, to pray for our country. You have commanded us in scriptures to do the same. You've also commanded us to pray for the leadership and to pray for those who rule over us. And we pause and take this opportunity to do this tonight. We pray for land in a very special way. Lord, this is a great land. This is a wonderful land. This is a land that has produced so many great and outstanding individuals and will continue to do that, but we want to depend upon you. We don't want to leave your precepts, we don't want to leave your standards. Lord, we understand that when we abide by your laws, your rules, and your standards, that we will be blessed, because your word declares that righteousness exalts a nation, but sin is a reproach to any people. And I pray that righteousness, Lord, will be like a running river throughout the length and breadth of our country, that our minds and our attitudes will change and that we will depend upon you for wisdom, for counsel, and for direction. And Lord, I pray in a very special way tonight that you will give us that. We pause also to pray, Father, for Prime Minister, I pray that your hands of wisdom, might, and power would rest upon his life. I pray that he would, as the psalmist David say, "Look unto the hills from whence cometh his help," for his help comes from God, who has created heaven and earth. So I pray that he would look to you at all times. And we do understand, Lord, that our nation would face difficult times, hardships, painful experiences, but help us to trust in you in everything that we do and every crisis and every problematic situation that we face, may we still trust in Almighty God. I pray for the rest of the colleagues who are around him. I pray, Lord, that all of them would realise how important it is to be a team, to be united, to respect one another, to love one another, to have a fraternal spirit among one another. And I pray, Father, that that will prevail. And know, Father, tonight, we bring up this arrangement here, we understand the importance of it. I pray that you will give guidance, that you would give counsel. I pray, Lord, that a very good spirit will prevail, whether it's with the leadership or the audience, I pray that it'll be fine and wonderful interaction. We place this tongue hall meeting into your hands, and Lord, we pray that you would so bless, in Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you very much Reverend Wurm. Ladies and gentlemen, once again, good evening. This is a very unique and special evening, it's great to see so many of you, and I know there's people who are on the way yet tonight. This evening, we will witness a presentation by your Prime Minister, the Honourable Tillman Thomas, that will cover government's programme of activities and projects for the next two years. After that, we have a bit of a surprise for you, I think I'll keep that as a surprise. And you would be able to ask some questions as well of our ministerial team. Of course, I have to let you know that after tonight's presentation, this presentation will form a tongue hall discussion that will happen across the length and breadth of Grenada. Every parish, I want to say every nook and cranny, but certainly every parish, will have the benefit of discussion and questions of their representatives and of the ministers of government on the areas of responsibility. So tonight, we dedicated a presentation. Following the presentation, we will have a copy of the speech printed for you, and we will distribute it as you leave this evening, so you can take it home, study it, go through it, and then form your questions that you can take to your tongue hall meetings. I want to, at this time, welcome all the radio stations and television stations through the Government Information Service that are with us this evening, and to welcome our viewers as well, who have tuned in for this very important presentation this evening. Ladies and gentlemen, without any further ado, I wish to invite now our Prime Minister, the Honourable Tillman Thomas, to make his address. Prime Minister.
Thank you, Mr Master of Ceremonies, Cabinet colleagues, Senator the Honourable John Postle, President of the Senate, Permanent Secretaries, Members of the Diplomacy Co., fellow citizens, ladies, gentlemen, Members of the press, pleasant good night to you all. On the heels of a successful carnival celebration, on the advent of a new school year, and on the pinnacle of our glorious achievement in the athletics arena, I wish to take this opportunity to inform you of important initiatives that our government is embarking on. These initiatives, we view as extremely important as we move to deliver sustainable economic growth and benefits to our people. First, I congratulate all our students who have done well during the past year, particularly our scholarship winners. I also urge you to maximise the many available opportunities to enhance your knowledge base, your skills, and your true capacity for growth and professional development. Since taking office, our government has focused heavily on improving educational opportunities for all. In line with our manifesto pledge, we have increased the educational budget, we have made school books free, of course, for all students, we have restructured the curriculum, improved and rebuilt many schools, trained many teachers, and provided almost 300 university scholarships and other training opportunities to many of our citizens. Similarly, we have been able to successfully record continuous growth in output in our agricultural sector. All this is a direct result of increased focus on the sector. With help through the farm labour support, fertiliser, machinery assistance, and other inputs, our farmers have responded positively. We have begun to make an impact on our food security situation as well as achieving better utilisation of our natural resources. We have also articulated a new vision for Grenada's economic growth based on five economic pillars. These include education, health and wellness services, tourism and hospitality services, information and communication technology, and energy development and agribusiness. I shall comment on these pillars later. Ladies and gentlemen, the last three years have been especially challenging for our nation. It is well known that our government assumed office at a very difficult time. Indeed, the period 2008 to 2010 is referred to as the Great Recession. Even now, uncertainty lingers about the scope and speed of the global economic recovery. Every unbiased observer recognises that this has been a difficult period for the global economy of which Grenada is a small part. Despite these external circumstances, we believe that our government has performed reasonably well. However, a frequent and fair criticism of our government is that we are not telling the people what we are doing. So let me take a few minutes just to highlight some of the major achievements of our government that has not been sufficiently brought to the forefront, though many of you may be aware of some of them. Over the past three years, we have restored good governance, accountability, and transparency in public life. We have improved the management of the economy, this has been recognised by all the regional and international organisations, including the CDB, the ECCB, the World Bank, and the IMF. We have improved the environment for doing business and have just concluded an investment promotion strategy for Grenada. We have revived the agricultural sector. We removed the national reconstruction levy, thereby putting back at least $10 million into the hands of Grenadians each year. In addition, we have found ways to cushion the impact of the economic recession by implementing a number of safety net programmes, including the Free Barrels Programme, the Energy for the Poor Programme, and measures to subsidise the cost of cooking gas and fuel. We successfully negotiated a maritime boundary delimitation treaty with Trinidad and Tobago, paving the way for the exploitation of our marine resources. We have invested strongly in our nation's youth, 1,000 young persons are registered in the apprenticeship programme, and over 400 are currently receiving job training. We have also reintroduced the Kharid Co., which is having a tremendous impact. Fellow citizens, these are achievements for which we can all be justifiably proud, especially when we consider the situation that this government inherited. Upon assuming office in July 2008, our first challenge was to stabilise the economy which was in a free fall. Ladies and gentlemen, we have done so. The records will show, the records will show that as a result of our efforts, the rate of contraction in Grenada's economy fell from 7.7% in 2009 to 1.3% in 2010. Moreover, the preliminary figures for the first half of this year indicate that Grenada recorded positive economic growth in both the first and second quarters of this year of 1%. When I come to stating of the fact that we also experienced positive economic growth in the last quarter of 2010, this is the first time since 2008 that we have experienced three consecutive quarters of positive economic growth. Despite our credible efforts and improved economic management, it is clear that our public finances are not yet on a sustainable track. This issue must be addressed in the near future. We are in discussions with the IMF on these issues and expect a mission in early October. The government will be reviewing its options at this time. Now, withstanding these accomplishments, there are areas where our performance has been less than satisfactory. One such area is a frequent and fair criticism of government that the rate of implementation of decisions and projects is slow. As head of government, I will be the first to acknowledge that things often do not move as fast as I would like. In fairness, the nation will also recognise that previous administrations have also grappled with this issue. Indeed, some years ago, a previous administration appointed a minister for implementation. As we consider how best to ensure effective government, cabinet has carefully considered this issue and have decided on a package of measures to accelerate the implementation of some projects. Before outlining these measures, I wish to look ahead to what the nation can expect over the next two years concerning economic activities and job creation. In this regard, I shall first of all share with you some of the initiatives that are being pursued in the five transformational sectors, and secondly, to brief you on some of the major projects that will constitute the core of government's work programme for the next two years. The transformational sectors. In health, wellness, and education services, your government has negotiated a new comprehensive agreement governing the ongoing collaborative relationship with the St George's University. This agreement concretises the cooperation between the government of Grenada and St George's University in a wide range of areas and activities. These include accreditation, research and development, exchange of information, a clinical teaching programme for SGU students, and the establishment of a new teaching hospital in Grenada. I am happy to state here tonight that a clinical teaching programme that we have agreed with the university has now begun at our hospital. This agreement will result in the immediate upgrading of many aspects of the healthcare system, including new x-ray, ultrasound, laboratory, and other equipment. This programme will allow for a vast improvement in our health services as well as to considerably expand the number and length of time the SGU students will spend in Grenada. As we all know, spending more time in Grenada means that more economic activity will be generated. Furthermore, we have commenced the process of the building of the teaching hospital. The government has entered into a contract for advisory services with the International Financial Cooperation, IFC, the private sector arm of the World Bank Group, to make this a reality. IFC has been mandated to provide advice on the development and implementation of a public-private partnership for the design, construction, financing, equipping, and commissioning of a replacement hospital for the St George's General Hospital, which will incorporate teaching facilities for St George's University. An appropriate site is currently being identified and construction is targeted to commence in the next 18 months. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm also delighted to confirm that the University of the West Indies has reached an agreement with the government of Grenada to establish its open campus here on the island. Lands have been identified in Hope St Andrew, and arrangements have been made, and arrangements have been made to complete purchase and transfer of lands to the university. This development is intended to occur in two phases, with phase one to include the administration buildings, computer labs, and video conferencing facilities, several classrooms, a learning commons, a library, lecture theatre, auditorium, as well as seminar and other multipurpose rooms. The first phase is estimated to cost approximately $11 million EC dollars, and work is expected to begin in July 2012. This will allow for increased economic activity, increased employment, and increased access to tertiary education for Grenadians at a much lower cost. Energy. With the support of a grant of 2.5 million euros, the equivalent of 9.6 million EC dollars from the European Union, the government of Grenada, and working in conjunction with Greenlec to provide up to 1.9 megawatts of electricity generating capacity in Karaku through the financing and purchase of wind turbines. Draft agreements with both the European Union and Greenlec have now been prepared and should be signed shortly, paving the way for the commencement of this project. This will result in a lower cost of electricity generation and less reliance on fossil fuels. Meanwhile, negotiations continue between the government of Grenada and Greenlec with respect to exploiting the benefits of geothermal energy. Through support from the World Bank, Grenada has secured 7 million EC dollars representing its contribution to the establishment of a regional energy regulator to be known as the Eastern Caribbean Energy Regulatory Authority. Like Ektel, this will be a sub-regional entity and should eventually lower electricity prices in the Eastern Caribbean. In agribusiness, work is ongoing on a cocoa processing plant in Diamond, San Mark. Government has already given 200,000 EC dollars of its 300,000 EC dollars commitment to this project. This plant will add value to this industry as well as providing needed employment in that area. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm also pleased to announce that after credible and extensive research, this administration has decided to give its support to the establishment of an integrated poultry processing plant in San Mark. A joint venture between government and a local investor is presently being pursued. This operation has the potential to employ as many as 150 persons during construction and 120 persons on a full-time basis. More would be said about this in the coming weeks. These projects will be welcomed interventions in San Mark, which has traditionally been one of the poorest parishes. In tourism, strenuous efforts are employed to identify resources and partners to deliver a flagship hotel in Grenada. Great progress has been made, and we look forward to making a definitive announcement shortly. Very importantly, a vigorous marketing campaign is being planned to market Grenada as a preferred destination. In information and communication technology, Grenada will participate in the Caribbean Regional Infrastructure Project. This is a 27 million EC dollar project that will be funded by the World Bank and will help Grenada to establish an ICT backbone for better, faster, and cheaper internet connectivity. A project manager will be appointed in the month of October. Ladies and gentlemen, while these transformational initiatives have the potential to finally place Grenada on a path of sustainable economic growth in the long run, it is important to recognise that they will not deliver the jobs and economic benefits required in the short run. This is why we have been working simultaneously with those initiatives to secure funding to undertake other major projects. These projects have the potential to significantly improve public infrastructure, create jobs, and improve the quality of life of the Grenadian people. Over the past three years, our government has negotiated and made preparations to implement several projects. Tonight, I wish to identify some projects we expect to implement over the next 24 months. We have selected these projects based on several criteria. These include security and certainty of financing, the job creation potential, and the level of preparation for implementation already completed. One, the Grenville market development. This project is funded by the Caribbean Development Bank and government at the cost of 35.6 million EC dollars. At this time, we are pleased to report that contracts for both the abattoir and the market have been awarded and workers commence. In the case of the bus terminus, we are awaiting the approval of the Caribbean Development Bank to proceed with the tendering process. Agricultural field roads, phase two. This project is funded by the Curate Fund and the OPEC Fund and government of Grenada. It provides for the rehabilitation and construction of at least 16 farm roads all over Grenada at the cost of 54 million EC dollars. After discussions with the Curate Fund, it has been agreed that the project will be re-tendered. Eight contractors, including Consolidated Contractors Company, have been shortlisted. The invitation to tender will be issued in October. Given the procurement process, we anticipate that this project would finally commence in the first half of 2012. This approach was taken to ensure that Grenada would receive value for money borrowed and spent. Market access and rural enterprise project. This project is funded by the Caribbean Development Bank, the International Fund for Agriculture Development, and government at cost of 22 EC million dollars. It will support employment in rural communities, in areas such as farming, fishing, and small business. This project has commenced with the office based in Sotiers. Already, the project has conducted research and organisational development work in Mont Craven, Mont Hone, Maran, and Latant. It has collaborated with the Ministry of Agriculture. It has collaborated with the Ministry of Agriculture on goat milk production in St Patrick and poultry production in St David. Regional Disaster Risk Reduction Program. This is a major project which includes the replacement of two bridges in Guav, the rehabilitation of two schools, Holy Cross RSC and St Patrick's Anglican, the rehabilitation of the Cadrona Home for the Age and the Hillsview Home for the Age, among other things. The total cost of this project is 70.7 EC million dollars and includes 21 million dollars in grant from the Pilot Program of Climate Resilience. Some project activities will commence this year with most activities during next year. Social Safety Net and Assistance Program. This project is funded by the World Bank at the cost of 13 million EC dollars and will help to ensure that government's safety net programs, especially the public assistance, the necessitous fund and the transportation allowance for students target and benefit the most vulnerable persons. Venezuela Multi Project. This EC 16.5 million dollar project involves the rehabilitation of the St George's Market Square, Ford Bridge, Tantin Pavilion, Montu and Snell Hall Projects. The Ford Bridge has started and the Tantin Pavilion will start before the end of this year. The start of the Montu and Snell Hall Project await the completion of design and preparatory works. St Patrick's Roads. The project involves the designs of 8.6 miles of roads, bridges, culverts, signage and sidewalks in St Patrick. Two sections, one between Duquen and Sartre's and the other between Montfendeu and Pointe-Sfile would be done. It is funded by the Caribbean Development Bank at a projected cost of EC 23.7 million dollars. Construction is targeted for the fourth quarter of 2012. St John's River feasibility study and designs. This project is also funded by the Caribbean Development Bank and government at an approximate cost of EC 23 million dollars. This project involves the design and implementation of flood mitigation measures. Construction is targeted to start by the end of the third quarter of 2012. Schools Rehabilitation Projects, Phases One and Two. These two projects will be funded by the Caribbean Development Bank at the cost of EC 33 million dollars. This include work on several schools, including St Joseph's Convent, St George's, Grenville Secondary School and the Montrose SDA Comprehensive School. Fellow citizens, it is estimated the projects which I just mentioned will pump 268 million EC dollars into the Grenadian economy over the next 24 months and will generate at least 1,000 jobs during construction and a few hundred after construction. In outlining these projects, it is worth pointing out that not all will be completed within the next 24 months. Indeed, on many of these projects, work has already started or is on track to commence before year end. We consider it necessary to make this observation, given the misguided tendency by some to interpret every project commencing its life cycle in the last year of a government's term as a result of political expediency. It is also worth saying that while we have highlighted some projects, there are several other projects identified and developed by government for which funding has been secured or for which negotiations are at an advanced stage. These include the Houses of Parliament, 18 million EC dollars. Lotus Lane Government Complex, Office Complex, 19 million EC dollars. Maurice Bishop International Airport Upgrade, 10 million EC dollars. And Schools Rehabilitation, 27 million EC dollars. I wish to pledge tonight that this government shall continue to look for ways to improve the lives of our people, whether it is three years or three months from an elections. Indeed, our government recognizes the challenges faced by many of our people for adequate housing and community improvement. Given our limited resources to satisfy these needs, our government approached our friends from the People's Republic of China and successfully renegotiated the terms of the agreement between our two governments. This agreement provided for 2,000 low-income housing units from the People's Republic of China. As a result of those negotiations, the government of the People's Republic of China has now agreed to reallocate resources in favor of pressing and urgent needs. The number of low-income housing units to be constructed will now be 1,000 and the reserved gratuitous aid estimated to be approximately 40 million US or 1.8 million EC shall be used for projects which the government of Grenada regard as its priority. While the specific details of these projects are yet to be worked out, our government has already signaled its intention to use these resources for the following. One, rebuilding the Athletic Stadium. Two, house repair and home improvement for the thousands of families who have been without help for so long. And three, community improvement by undertaking projects in communities badly in need of assistance. Ladies and gentlemen, it is important that we realize and acknowledge that no matter how noble our intentions and grand our plans, they will all come to naught if suitable arrangements are not made for their implementation. If we are to succeed in implementing these projects, a well-defined and workable plan must be put in place for implementation. In recognition of this, the Cabinet of Ministers has agreed on the following course of action. One, to approve a work program of carefully selected major projects for the next 24 months, as elaborated in my presentation here tonight, since these projects will anchor the 2012 and 2013 budgets. Two, to appoint a major projects coordination committee that shall meet fortnightly to monitor progress of these projects. The committee comprises of the Permanent Secretary, Ministry of Finance, Chief Technical Officer, Ministry of Works, Director of Technical and Economic Cooperation, Director of Office of Private Sector Development, Senior Representative, Ministry of Housing and Community Development, Senior Representative, Ministry of Foreign Affairs and two representatives with project management experience from the private sector. Three, to appoint project managers for all major projects where such appointments have not yet been made. Four, to appoint full-time program coordinator to ensure daily monitoring of these projects and to report to the Major Projects Implementation Committee and the Cabinet. Five, to appoint a National Economic and Business Council to support development of the economy and monitor implementation of selected projects. Six, to inform the nation about these projects, these major projects at the earliest opportunity. Cabinet will review the progress of these major projects once per month and give direction as necessary. As Prime Minister, I shall be taking full responsibility for managing and ensuring that what we have announced here tonight will be achieved. Fellow citizen, as I conclude, let me reiterate that together we have weathered this difficult economic storm with great resilience. Tonight, I have set out for you some of the major projects that will be the focus of our administration for the next two years. Moreover, I have set out how we propose to accelerate implementation of these major projects. As a government and as a nation, let us be inspired by the exploits of our national athletes, especially Kirani James, our homegrown world champion. Kirani's outstanding performance today established a new national record. I again congratulate him on behalf of all Grenadians. His brilliant performances are powerful reminders of three important lessons. First, that greatness can come from humble beginnings. Second, that with hard work and tenacity, we can accomplish our goals. Finally, that regardless of how you start, it is important to finish strong. Let us embrace these lessons as we strive to build our nation. I thank you and may God bless our nation.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Prime Minister. Ladies and gentlemen, he ended tonight on a note that we've all been thinking of, has been present in our minds for the last week and a half. Well, for some of us, more than that. And so tonight, as we continue in the mode of celebrating, for those of you who had to come here and could not get a chance to see the race, surprise I have for you that we're actually going to show the race.
Young man just came easing past him very easily indeed in the home straight. Will this be déjà vu for LeSean Merritt and Kirani James in the same lanes as they were just last week in Dagu? Certainly, LeSean Merritt, as he always does, has gone off very quickly, but this time so has Kirani James and Gonzales, the Jamaican. Kirani James now beginning to close down, the Jamaican outside him. LeSean Merritt hasn't really made his move yet. Perhaps LeSean Merritt knows what a finish Kirani James has got, so maybe he's saving something for the home straight. There's Kirani James and LeSean Merritt, gold and silver medalists from Dagu. How does that come into the home straight? Now, can LeSean Merritt turn the tables? No, he can't. Look at Kirani James come out the way. This is quick. 44-36 for Kirani James. That's just 100th second outside of the time that LeSean Merritt set. Has the fastest time in the world in the heat in Dagu. And what a prospect this guy is. A lifetime best at just 19 years old.
I think to get coverage of our to get coverage of our athletes, we need to send a television crew to wherever they're running, you understand? But certainly, congratulations in place for another national record, Kirani James. Put your hands together again for him, please.